Welcome to all. It's great to be back again this year, 2026. We're certainly thankful to be here, thankful for what we have. This PCosen City Council meeting is called to order, and I would like to make note that we have an amended agenda tonight. The Item G, the public hearing scheduled for tonight, has been canceled for tonight, and we will advertise for that public hearing to be held at the next council meeting on January 26. So moving on to Item B, the invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led tonight by Councilwoman Jeanne Hubbard.
Gracious God, we gather for our first meeting of this new year. We give thanks for the opportunity to serve our community together. We ask for wisdom as we listen, clarity as we speak, and human rights as we make decisions that affect the lives of our neighbors. May we be mindful that behind every policy, every report, and every plan are real people with real needs. As we begin 2026, help us lead with integrity to seek understanding and to act with courage when it's needed. May our work this evening honor both the responsibilities we all love. Amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeanne. Item C on our agenda is a proclamation in recognition of Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and I will read that at this time. Proclamation reads as Whereas the city of PCosen, Virginia is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all individuals who live in or visit us and our community, and whereas human trafficking is both a crime and a public health issue that exploits the most vulnerable, undermining the well-being of individuals, families, and communities across generations, and whereas more than two decades after the enactment of the Trafficking Victims Protection Act, human trafficking persists, including the use of force, fraud, or coercion to recruit, harbor, or transport individuals for purposes of labor or commercial sex, and whereas an estimated 27.6 million people are currently subjected to human trafficking worldwide with cases reported in every U.S. state and territory, and whereas while anyone can be a victim of trafficking, certain populations such as those experiencing abuse, poverty, homelessness, discrimination, or social isolation are all at elevated risk, and whereas trafficking occurs both in person and online and in a variety of industries including domestic work, restaurants, construction, agriculture, and manufacturing. Victims may be exploited by strangers, employers, partners, or even family members, and whereas prevention efforts must focus on building individual, community, and societal resilience by addressing root causes such as inequality, social disconnection, and economic vulnerability, and whereas combating human trafficking requires a coordinated, community-wide response involving law enforcement, service providers, government, and the public, and whereas survivors of trafficking bring critical insight and expertise, and the city of PCosen is committed to partnering with them to inform and strengthen services and prevention programs, and whereas every individual, family, and organization can contribute to raising awareness, preventing exploitations, and supporting survivors by learning more at acf.hss.gov/otip and humantraffickinghotline.org. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that PCosen City Council declares the month of January 2026 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month, reaffirming our commitment to increase awareness and education on human trafficking and make resources available to assist individuals and communities impacted by human trafficking, and build diverse public-private partnerships to support a more comprehensive response to prevent and respond to human trafficking. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the seal of the city of PCosen, Virginia to be affixed this 12th day of January 2026. And this proclamation has been signed by all seven council members, and we have with us tonight Ms. Anna Glatter. And Anna, we have this copy of the proclamation to present to you. You could approach the documents, please.
Anna, thank you for being here, and thank you for your public service.
Item D on our agenda, special presentations. We have two of them tonight. The first is from the York-PCosen Department of Social Services, and we're very pleased to have with us Ms. Denise Hall and Ms. Margaret Akyerek. They're great friends to the city of PCosen and provide tremendous service to the overall well-being of this community. So ladies, the floor is yours. Yes, ma'am. Please do.
Good evening, everyone. I want to say special thanks to Mayor Hucks, the city manager, City of Turner, and fellow council members for allowing us to come and give our presentation today. So as we start off here, we give a presentation every year, and since we started at the beginning of January, there's not a title or correction. I'm presenting numbers to you from 2024. However, in our presentation, we are going to also talk about many of the activities that we've done throughout this current year. I'm sorry. Was I not speaking? I guess I wasn't. Thank you.
Okay. Well, for York-PCosen Social Services, for those of you that are not familiar, both online or in person, we believe in our mission statement that our mission is to assist in the basic needs of our citizens and to promote self-sufficiency and protect vulnerable children and adults. That's at the heart of everything that we do for all the programs that we provide. I don't think you have the summary of impact on that. Okay. Whoops. Back. Summary of impact for 2024, we had 16,616 unduplicated count of DSS, Department of Social Services clients, 1,329 combined APS, which is Adult Protective Services, and CPS, which is Child Protective Services reports, 4,934 requests for financial assistance, and 710 service intake program. We also had 409 childcare and employment services for 2024. Some of our spending to go over for social services, you can see here the total of our costs, administrative costs, purchase services, client benefits, and then the total percentage by source. So as you can see in the chart that we provide here today, that we provide a lot of services to both communities. And it is important to note that federal and state matches a lot of the funds that we disperse in giving people the assistance that they need. When you look at local costs, that's breaking it down to talk about how much is contributed from the localities versus the total cost and reimbursement. And when you see NER, that's not eligible for reimbursement. That's what NER refers to. And that's, again, in every social services. There's certain things that were not eligible for reimbursement, but by and large, the majority of just about everything we provide is. To look at the pie chart, when you see the expenditures by category, again, you can see the administrative costs are very, very low. Purchase services and client benefits take up the bulk of what it is that we provide in York and PCosen. So it's a total of 6% of indirect cost of staff and operations versus 94% of direct cost and client benefits. So you can see that that's pretty considerable. And again, just another chart showing you how it is that we are funded by source, both federal, state, and local. When you talk about the Department of Social Services totals, the total amount, including not eligible for reimbursement costs spent on social services in the locality for fiscal year 2024 was 109,877 and 594. When you talk about the total amount spent on social services contributed by the locality, including not eligible for reimbursement costs, you can see that that amount is significantly lower. Now to go on to one of our favorite subjects, Denise is here with me. We're going to tag team a little bit on this. We decided to not just be all administrative in numbers, but we really wanted to talk about what the heart of Department of Social Services does. And I would like to introduce Denise Hall, who is our community outreach coordinator, who does an amazing job. And for those of you that don't know, and those that may be online, she is actually housed out of PCosen in the same building that the City of Public Works is, and she does a great job. She's a busy bee. She's always going everywhere. No stone is left unturned, and always looking to see ways that we can improve and provide additional resources in our community and meet the needs. So giving back to our community and making a difference, right? That's what we're all here to do and to be a part of. The picture that you see here was actually from this year. We participate every year in the food bank giveaway and drive, and our month is November, so we find it humbling and appropriate that it's around Thanksgiving. And we, with a bunch of staff of volunteers, we go and we help assemble and disperse out food. City of PCosen has always warmed my heart. This will be my sixth year going into, hard to believe, since I accepted the position of Director of Social Services. But the city of PCosen does an outstanding job in their food drive and making sure that people in the community get their food met. Both localities do, but PCosen stands out in my heart because I have participated in food drives for aging myself a little over 35 years, and I have never seen food drives like this done here. There are people waiting, they're wrapped around the corner, there's something special for everybody, nobody's left unturned. In addition to that, there's special packages for the seniors and the aging population. And I encourage anybody that wants to volunteer to get involved. This year, obviously, it was at MEAS Church, and every locality in the state of Virginia, not just ours, was experiencing significant shortages and receiving those foods. And yet, I am proud to say that as a volunteer that also worked that event this year, no one was left unturned. Everybody went away with a significant amount of food to bring back to their home. So then we had what kind of spurred off of that and at the same time. So if I can be completely transparent and talk about, for social services, we've had many, many different cuts this year that have affected the clients, both in the city of PCosen as well as York County. And it was very challenging. A lot of that had to do with the SNAP benefits and their food distribution, their amounts were cut. There was also, many of you may have saw in the news, that it was a scamming situation where people's benefits were being taken just as their cards were being uploaded to get food. It was a very fast scramble. We also then went into a government shutdown. That also increased our need and cost. So we shifted as an agency and understanding the need, in addition to addressing and donating to the Peninsula Food Bank over $100,000. We also shifted internally and said, how can we make sure that no one is left without food? So it became a food drive both internally and externally. And we had two community partners that were absolutely stellar and stepped up to the plate to help us support that because all of the food pantries were exhausted. We were getting phone calls constantly saying, we can't handle your clientele coming our way. But I would like to give special recognition to MEAS Church in the city of PCosen for the outstanding work that they do in staffing their food bank. They were willing for us to come. We had totally collected over 10,000 pounds of canned goods and non-perishable food that we were able to disperse between St. Luke's in York County as well as MEAS in the city of PCosen. And so the townal monetary funds raised were just shy of $5,000. And that $5,000 went into a special welfare account that is managed by my department. We have many different line budget items, but that was specifically for any needs that we couldn't meet in addition to the food drive, in addition to partnering with the partners. So it was all hands on deck to say towards the end where we had roller skates on. That's for certain. But a lot of good came to a lot of people. A lot of people were able to get their needs met, and we were really, really excited to have that partnership this year. And we look forward to it ongoing in the years ahead.
And our community partners also included the city of PCosen Public Works. We received canned goods from all around York County and our community. So we cannot do this without partnering with all of you, and we thank the city of PCosen for what you did to contribute and help out. We had a box out in the library so anybody could donate canned goods and foods. I picked it up like three times, it was full. So we thank you for being a part of this great effort to make a difference in our community.
It was wonderful. Some of the other things that we're really proud and want to just bring acknowledgement to the city of PCosen and all of the residents. So something that started in York County in 2025, we received a NACO, the National Association for County Officials Achievement Awards, and that was for a community project that we had started in there within a school system, and it was in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. It grew very quickly. The room that you're seeing there is an example of a room that was dedicated within the middle school, Yorktown Middle School to be specific. And it was furnished, we were able to bring together projects, and we have now well over 20 kids that are involved in there. It's in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. It gives them a healthy outlet, especially today when you're talking about the most vulnerable age for teens, for vaping, for learning, you know, fighting against bullying. And the cost was nothing for them, and it ends up being something that they can actively get engaged in. What we saw as a result of this project is that it grew and grew and grew, and it's our desire, Denise's and I, because this was our baby that we started, that we wanted to see this grow and go into the high schools as well as elementary schools. But the first step was, we started here, and so we're proud to say that this year, we're in partnership with the city of PCosen to be offering this program in the middle school there. And so we'd like to see it exponentially grow equally in both areas, regardless of size. Another thing that we were able to obtain, because the kids got so heavily involved in this, they were so happy to have their own space and their freedom and then also be taught a skill set. It's not just a drug prevention program, it's how to be a leader, how to be a mentor, how to eat healthy, how to make better choices. It's all about empowering the student and how they can give back. And as a result of that, they gave back to the community by going out and doing their own volunteerism into the communities. And so we have now secured a vehicle that is shared between both localities so that those kids can be out and mobile and participate in the different events they have. So we're super excited about it. I hope anybody that's watching online, anybody you know that has families, children, or of that age, please look for that to come because it's a really valuable asset.
And that funding came from the opioid abatement funds that were available, and so Margaret and I just kind of said this would be a great opportunity to kind of get this program up and going. And so we submitted a proposal to York County and was awarded over $45,000. And again, this year, we submitted another proposal, which was approved, and that's where that vehicle came from that the Boys and Girls Club has. It's going to be able to take the youth out and do community involvement as well as go back and forth between the two locations like Margaret was saying. So we're just excited for this program. It is free, so anybody can reach out to the Boys and Girls Club who have any middle school children who want to be a part. We are in the early stages of collaborating with the city of PCosen. We just submitted the opioid abatement proposal. We're waiting for results for that so that we can get this up and going in the middle school. So we are excited.
Yes, and we're excited because I think both localities can see the benefit that it offers to the children. We all know that children left unattended will find something to do. And so we would rather have them participate in something that is beneficial to them. But it's just a great, great program, and it really talks about building leaders of all kinds. And it doesn't have to be educationally addressed as much as it is personally addressed so that they make better choices for themselves. So now we roll into, we talked about government shutdown, we talked about SNAP benefits, we talked about running into the food donations, and we've been working on talked about running into the food donations, and we've been working on the Chris Heron Project for Pecosin, which we're excited to see get lifted off the ground. Now rolls in Christmas. We had more requests this year for our department than we have ever had in five years, looking back since I've been here. The request started as early as October 1. We may, if the need continues to be as great as it is next year, actually have to make some additional steps, because both Denise and myself were in Walmart until the day before Christmas and delivering gifts at, at there. But we are proud to say that not one resident of either locality that came forth to include those at the last hour, and I mean the last hour, got turned away or didn't receive gifts and assistance of sorts from us. So we're very proud of that. Our Christmas donations used to purchase items for family needs, and we also had 54 gift bags for the Bayside-Pecosin residents, which I think that some of you may like to know. We've built a great collaboration, and again, I give Denise credit. But I also need to give credit for those viewers that are online, to know that your fellow city council members, as well as mayor, as well as city manager, has been a part of that. So we've done different things to acknowledge the staff, as well as the residents. We've done different treats, different foods. And you know, it goes back to the thing that when we want to ensure that our loved ones are cared for, it also includes acknowledging the staff and going in where they're at. And so that's been a really positive collaboration that we've had with them. Also, to acknowledge some of the other, because this is specific for Pecosin tonight, I do want to acknowledge other Pecosin community support, the Pecosin Baptist Church, the Parish Thrift Store, and obviously, the City of Pecosin residents. But that was our, we did have the Giving Tree tags. This year, they were located at Yorktown Library. We looked to rotate that back and forth between the different localities. So I anticipate that this year, we will be choosing in Pecosin, obviously. We try to switch it every year. Another really popular event that we had, Denise and myself, we applied for, it was a one-time state funding dollars, and we were awarded it. Really, no other localities or very few out of 120, I think it was three localities in total, that were awarded the $12,500. And so the initiative was to get more fathers involved in and doing some outings, specifically in recognizing with our children that may have that absent. And that doesn't necessarily mean biological father, right? That can be grandfather, that can be uncle, that can be other partners that we had. But this year, we were able to assist with 44 fathers with up to two children, and that they were registered from either the City of Pecosin in York County. And I will say that despite the disparity in the actual total number of residents that live in each locality, Pecosin was heavily represented. And we were really happy to see that. It was a great day. They all went, you know, to Busch Gardens. We had a catered lunch for them. We had a presentation for the fathers. We had a giveaway bags. It was really, it was a great event to see all the children come together. It was so successful that this year, even though we don't have the grant from the state anymore, it was a one, one-time and done. Denise has done a great job of raising funds and getting people to donate for us, so that we could do it again. So this year, a little bit of a smaller scale due to cost, right? We have three different events that we are going to be supporting for the fatherhood engagement. And specifically this year, we're looking for teenagers, 13 to 17, and then obviously with a guardian of any sort, age 21. So they're going to be doing like a little paint and popcorn provided event, and we're just really excited to look forward to it. The location here in Pecosin is going to be-
And it's going to be, it has just recently changed, so I got the, it's going to be at the Odd Community Center. So I'll update the flyer, and we'll get that out for, to put out in the media.
But any questions that you have, or anybody that would like to participate in the event, feel free to call our office. So that's 3787-757-890-3787. Please make sure that you sign up and register for the event. We hope to serve as many people as we can. This is just another one of the events, I believe this was at Pecosin, was Bayside or Pecosin? I thought so, but I needed my glasses. And that was one of the events that we had participated in this year, just to show that we're out in the community about and what it is that we're doing.
Yes, I received an email from Bayside-Pecosin saying, hey, we would love for you to participate in this program. And I just opened up and shared with our councilman, and they were right on for to come and represent the city over at that event. And so I thank you for coming and supporting us.
And this is just another example of working with, within the City of Pecosin and the community partners, working together along with Public Works. And for those of you that may not know, to give full acknowledgement to a lot of our elderly, or those that are needing some additional assistance with their housing or items that need to be fixed, Kirkwood Church, their volunteers do all of that on their own time. Most of the time, like I said, the items are donated, but they're, they're quick to come in and lend a helping hand. So we're just also just acknowledging them tonight as a thank you.
In this particular situation, the family needed help. I was able to kind of coordinate with Pecosin Public Works, saying, hey, can you, if we bring the stuff, all the trees or stuff to the road, can you help us out? And then I also reached out to York County, their waste management, and said, hey, can you waive, I have volunteers coming in to drop off these tree branches and weights, can you waive any fees for us? And they did. So it was a community collaborative with various different departments working together to help this family clear all this debris off that was causing city code violations and different things that we needed to help out with.
And then, of course, who can forget, if you're in the City of Pecosin, you cannot, and in memory of Dave Callis, because he always did since the very minute I started here, the Pecosin Seafood Festival would never go without being noticed or announced. And so since we have been in this inception, we have been partnering with them and volunteering for that fabulous event that so many people look forward to. So there's just a couple of snapshots from this year.
This is our fourth year, and we do the condiment tents. So Social Services, we volunteer all day long on a Saturday, and then we just make sure the condiments are refilled. And then it's just an opportunity for us just to get to know the community, and the community know us. So it's a great opportunity. We're thankful for that.
It's much like the food drive, in that it's really important. And what's, what's humbling for me as a, as a director of a department is, these are all staff that are volunteering to do this, because they want to actually make that connection with their clients and see them in the community. And I can see it's very reciprocal when you see the reaction when they recognize that this is somebody that's assisting them with other needs that they may have. So we look forward to that continued collaboration. And then lastly, if anybody has any questions, and also, should anyone ever need assistance, please make sure to call our main line. If you do not know it, I'll repeat it again. It's 757-890-3787. And I thank you for allowing us to come to the presentation. Does anybody have any questions for Denise or myself? Well, thank you so much for your time today. I appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have a question. I was just going to say, we do thank you for the Pecosin Mobile Food Pantry, all the food you give. We had a lot to give out just last week, and then an extra 80 pounds or whatever it was that came from Denise was like a welcome gift that we were able to turn around. So thank you for that.
No, you're absolutely welcome. And to, to your point for what you all do at that food pantry, I can give you some, the reason I'm doing 2024, and I explained this to my administrative board when we had our last meeting, is, is that our total, total numbers don't come out for all of our programs. That's why we're always kind of reporting a year behind. But he was able to extract one particular program, and I just got it in the last three days. In the last three days, our SNAP totals for issuance doubled. And on average, we spend as a dual locality, $255,000 that we issue out. So to think that in the 30s day worth of time, because of new applications and things being received and people meeting those eligibility requirements, that's incredulous. So the need's there, but you know, we're continuing to fight the good fight and make sure everybody gets the assistance that they need. But thank you again for having us today. Do I need to do anything, Denise?
Margaret and Denise, thanks so much for being with us. We certainly appreciate y'all doing the presentation, and we enjoy having presentations such as y'alls that is interesting, insightful, and has some entertainment value as well. So definitely value added to our council meeting, and thank you for being with us.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Moving on to our next presentation, which I'm sure will be consistent with the first. Victory Boulevard is something that council members and staff get quite a few questions on, and we've had these two gentlemen here with us previously, and want to thank both of them for being with us again tonight. Thanks so much for taking the time. And this presentation is from the Virginia Department of Transportation, specifically Victory Boulevard Traffic Improvement, the project's update. We have Mr. Rossi Carroll, who is the residency administrator, and we have Mr. Joe Ludwig, who is the engineer overseeing this project. So gentlemen, thank you for being with us. The floor is yours.
Thank y'all for having us. I'm going to actually turn it over to Joe first. He's going to go through the construction piece, and then I'll go through the projects that are in design, future projects that will impact areas, travel public.
Thank you, Rossi. Good evening. Thanks again for the invite. Always a pleasure to come to City of Pecosin. But yeah, like Rossi said, I'm Joe Ludwig, I'm the district construction engineer for VDOT and Hampton Roads. Going to speak about, we have quite a bit of work going on currently, and we have some future projects in the Pecosin-York County area, so going to talk a little bit about that. So we have, I had been here before for the With Creek project, but we have an ongoing project on Victory Boulevard, one on Route 134, over Route 17 Bridge Rehab, some upcoming paving work, and then Rossi will go over some of the upcoming projects. Very difficult to see that, that picture, but in the community, but there's about seven projects, three of, three of which are active, one that's going to be coming online this spring, and then we have several at the end of the year and in 2027. But the good news is that they all won't be going on at the same time, though it might seem that way, but as, as projects and other ones are in the pipeline to come online. So the With Creek Road project, ongoing. I know we started this project back in March of '24. Project purpose, to raise the existing bridge elevation for emergency evacuation route to, and to widen With Creek Road to accommodate future traffic volumes. There's our website that we keep updated, but I won't spend too much time on the background of With Creek. But I do have some updates. I'm sure, as you know, the Carriage Chapel Road closure was implemented on January 5. This is a long-term full closure of Carriage Chapel Road at the intersection of With Creek Road. We do have a signed detour in place, and that work is really for the, the bridge tie-in. If you could see in, in, in the photo, in the middle there, right, right here is the new bridge, and really, that bridge has to tie into Carriage Chapel Road. So in order to do that, we have a closure in, in place, and, and we also have to widen this, this embankment here on Carriage Chapel Road to make like a, a right turn lane onto the future With Creek. But we have that slated, it's going to take a good part of the year, just about most of the year, for that closure to be in place. A lot, a lot of work to do. We actually, if you can see, just imagine this bridge, it's going to, the alignment's going to clip the exist, the existing bridge. So we need to demolish a portion of the existing bridge in order to build a new bridge. But before we can do that, we have, there's some water main work that needs to be done, that, and, and various utilities. So it's going to take a good part of the year. So the Carriage Chapel Road closure is going to be in place for that. So also, just an update, on the Hampton side, we've done some road lane reductions on that side, and some of the turn lanes on Commander Shepard. That, that work is, has related to a, some HRSD sewer main work for some relocation. That work is on schedule to be finished by the end of this month. So that will allow those turn lane closures to be picked up and put that back to how it previously was a couple months ago. But, so that's, that's good news there. Moving into the Victory Boulevard project, on, currently ongoing on Route 171. So this project is to prove capacity, safety, and traffic operations along the corridor by widening Victory Boulevard from five to six lanes between Route 17 and Hampton Highway, Route 134. So that's the But to the right, the yellow portion to the right, really what we're doing is, we're adding a third lane from Route 17 to 134. And it meets up with the existing right turn lane onto Route 134. So that part, that, that's one component of the project, and the other main component of the project is, to the left is essentially in the other direction, that, that, that lane exiting the Walmart parking lot area, we just, we widened that out and made a third lane there. And that was just opened last week, late last week, so that was the good news there. So, and, and as part of the project, there is, we are adding a second eastbound left turn lane onto Hampton Highway at the, the intersection. So just, I know it's, it, this, this project's been, it's a very tough corridor. I don't, I don't need to tell anyone that, but it, it, it's very challenging with the amount of traffic, the amount of traffic lights. But we have had our traffic crews out there trying to synchronize the lights better and monitoring it. But the good news is, on schedule to finish this spring. So that, that project, late, looks like late April, early May, that we should be done with that project. So that'll be good. Just a little more. There's the, the lane that was just open. That's an old picture, it's now open. And that's the construction. As I said, ongoing, we're, we're currently working on that third eastbound travel lane between George Washington Memorial Highway and Hampton Highway, and pavement striping to extend the right turn lane at Hillen Creek Parkway. And that, that's been done. And one of the two left turn lanes onto George Washington Memorial Highway, one of the two. So these are traffic impacts, so. Next project is the Route 134 over Route 17 Bridge Rehab in York County. This is, so we're rehabilitating the existing bridge, Route 24, Route 134 over Route 17. We're currently in the first phase of construction. We have an estimated completion date in late 2026. So in our traffic impacts here is the long-term closure of northbound traffic from Route 134 onto southbound 17. So we close this movement from- We closed this movement from 134 onto 17. And now, so that's now closed. So but, so traffic has to go up to 17, continues on 17. And those of you know, we do have a detour. You really have to make a U-turn here. Or once you get familiar with it, you essentially stay on 171 up to 17. But it's signed and in place. Current, like I said, currently in the first phase. It's, we're replacing the existing bridge decked. Once that's done, that, all of that remains the same, that the traffic impacts. We just flip-flop the traffic over a median crossover. So that's going to be in place through the end of 2026. And then upcoming, this, so we do have some paving work happening on essentially Route 134 Hampton Highway will be resurfacing this year. We've just awarded a contract to Branscombe. So essentially, it goes from Victory Boulevard to, in the eastbound direction, from Victory Boulevard to the Kiln Creek Bridge, which is the, with the Hampton-York County line. And then in the westbound direction, it's from Big Bethel Road to the abutment of Kiln Creek Bridge. So this would be some daytime work. Like I said, we got Branscombe, will be doing it. But we really got to work with them to make sure that we at least finish the Route 171 project. Because there is a potential for some conflicts right at the intersection of 134 and Victory Boulevard. So that work will be happening later this year. Now I'm going to pass it off to Rossi Carroll for some upcoming projects that we have in design.
Good evening. Like Joe said, you know, we have a lot of construction, smart scale. Most of it is smart scale projects, some maintenance projects for resurfacing in the area. And then also, we have projects that are in design that have approved funding for out years. So I'm going to kind of go over the projects that were currently in design, that we have allocated funding for. The Route 17 widening project is in York County. It, yeah, did it right away. It increases vehicle capacity. You know, we've done a few phases of 17 in York County, widening it from four lanes to six lanes. This just moves this all the way up to Denby Boulevard from where they left off of Phase 2 at Wolf Trap Road. That is, that is currently being designed. You have seen some work out there currently with utility relocation up towards the Denby Way. There's a lot of utility under Route 17. So we've tried to get two or three of them working at the same time and relocating utilities. But currently, you know, it should increase capacity, reduce congestion, improve safety and reliability, and support the economic development along 17. Plans include to widen in both directions from four to six lanes from Wolf Trap Road to just north of Denby Boulevard. Intersection improvements at Route 17 and Denby Boulevard, and traffic signal updates. Estimated advertisement for construction is later this year, late this year. We are really close. But like I said, we have to get all the utilities relocated, get the right-of-way, all the right-of-way secured. And then we will advertise for construction and hopefully get very good bids for that project. We also have Victory Boulevard capacity improvements in the design phase that is right down the road here. And that is to increase capacity, reduce congestion during the peak travel times, and improve multimodal mobility for Victory Boulevard from west of Bowman's Terrace to Big Bethel. And what that does, it adds, well, let me get into it. Project improvements, east and west, left turn lanes, and north and south Bowman Terrace. Also, new eastbound right turn lane at Big Bethel Road. And also, new shoulders along both sides of Victory Boulevard. And a 10-foot shared use path along the north side of Victory Boulevard. If you can see in the picture there, that's sort of the location where the project will be. Hold on, that is the wrong part. Let me hit the project. There we go. If you look at the picture to the right, you'll see the location where this project will be at. This also is going to be included with a shared use path project that goes east of Big Bethel. Both of these projects are designed separate, but are going to be advertised together. And like I said, advertisement for this is fall of 2027, which you will notice from Joe's presentation, will be after the completion of With Creek. So we've looked at that, trying to get everything done. But at the same time, making sure that both projects don't coincide or conflict with each other, allowing way of it. I will say that this project is a two-lane road with no shoulders currently. There will be some detouring that'll have to be done to construct at least the eight-foot shoulder. And then we can shift traffic. We are looking at the, we're studying the traffic impacts of detouring in both directions, dependent upon, originally, we said, all right, we're going to allow eastbound always and just detour westbound. We think there's less impacts if we do that reverse. But we will, we will wait for our consultants and engineers to come back with the study and try to make a decision from that. I can't tell you how long it'll take. But with the construction constraints, you just can't do it under traffic. The queuing would be horrible with flaggers during daytime. It's just a, it's a tough, tough location with limited pavement, you know, to try to get through there. But once you get the, once you get the eight-foot shoulders in, then you can shift traffic over, have traffic while Phase 2 is going on, which will be the shoulder on the other side, shared use path, those type of things, under traffic. We also have the Victory Boulevard Shared Use Path Project. That's to improve multimodal mobility along the corridor, provide pedestrian access, TAB High School, and the community athletic facilities. Plans include construction of one-mile shared use path on the north side of Victory Boulevard from Big Bethel to Sinclair Lane. It'll be a 10-foot wide asphalt path. We'll connect pedestrian and bicycle facilities along the Yorktown Road. This will advertise the same time as the other projects. So we're bundling both of these together as one project, being it's right there in the same corridor. Proposed shared use path is within existing right-of-way and offset of the road. So there shouldn't be too many traffic impacts associated with this project. Because a lot, a lot of the work can be done outside of the pavement area. And then maintenance traffic, like I said, we're still developing. That's part of the design of what the maintenance of traffic will be for that. And if you look at this map, this kind of shows, depicts the areas. The yellow will be the shared use path project. And the orange is the Victory Boulevard Capacity Improvements Project. Both of these are in design, and like I said, looking at fall of 2027 for advertisement day. And that concludes what we have under design and construction. So be happy to take any questions or any comments you may have.
Please. Yes, thank you for coming. When you were here last, I think they were in August or September, question came up. And it's on one of the, there it is, slide number five. At the bottom, I asked the question because you had construction of a five-foot sidewalk on the west side and an eight-foot multi-use path on the east side of the roadway in Pecosin. This is the With Creek Road widening project. And I pointed out that currently, up where businesses are, the west side is eight-foot wide and the east side is a five-foot wide. Was that going across? And you kind of looked at each other and said, I'll get back to you. And I'm back.
Why are you getting back?
Well, I won't go back.
Obviously, it makes a difference to where you put the sewers and roadway and stuff like that. Bullet on page five.
So make sure I have this right. You're saying that the, based on this here, the bullet you're saying is opposite?
Correct.
Okay, I got you. And that could have been a typo on our side.
And I wondered on that, on that very last project you talked about, which is the Victory Boulevard.
Capacity enhancements in the.
Yeah, the enhancements. Was that, although it's painted in orange, Victory Boulevard Shared Use Path is in yellow. Is that, is it going to be shared use paths all the way down?
Just for that mile to Sinclair?
Oh, just for that? So there's not, there's not going to be?
So there will be shared use paths. So there is a shared use path incorporated in the capacity improvements.
Okay.
And then, then you have the additional mile, which is a separate funded project, but it's going to be advertised.
Okay.
They all will connect right there at TAB, Yorktown High.
Excuse me, does that, this used path going to continue all the way except With Creek Road?
Any chance of it?
No, it will not. So you may remember that there was a smart scale project at one time that, really a multi-jurisdictional shared use path that ran all the way into Pecosin, kind of connecting this whole corridor.
Opening is still there.
But that project was canceled. So it stops, it stops there for now.
That helps your county a lot.
We didn't cancel the project.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are there, again, back to the Victory Boulevard enhancements projects, are there any projections or metrics on how those capacity improvements are indeed going to improve traffic flow?
So the turn lanes ability not to have to wait for traffic, turning left, turning right, having the additional turn lanes certainly helps with traffic flow. It also helps with emergency services as well. It also gives you extra pavement out there. So if something does happen, you can get around a vehicle. So those type of things are what the shoulders, the, because it's not actually adding a lane. It's adding 10-foot, but typically adds a lane, because the typical lane is 10 to 12 feet. But that allows those, the traffic to get around, especially if it's emergency services, those type of things. And then having the additional turn lanes also helps with throughput. Because you don't have to wait on traffic that's turning, that type of thing. They get off the road, you can continue on. But there's no new travel lane, which, you know, so instead of one wide, two wide, can't do that. But it does allow traffic to move through freer, with less interruptions.
I didn't know if there were any particular metrics that you, you know, the analysis comes up with that says, hey, by adding these turning lanes and that, you know, it can shave off 2.5 minutes or, you know, or anything like that.
So what they do, I mean, a lot of these, this project specifically ran through smart scale. And it looks at, you know, the county submitted the application for it, and these were the request. There's a scoring, you know, as they're going through these projects, they do some scoring, pedestrian, economic development, congestion mitigation, all these type of things are being scored. And so those improvements provided a score that allowed this project to get funded based off of those formulas. So it does help. I just can't tell you that, hey, you'll be five minutes quicker to the light of 17. Really, it really depends upon traffic, time of day, those type of things. But I think it will, I think you'll see improvements really with emergencies. Another thing, having the additional pavement, if there was the evacuation or something of that nature, you have the ability to, you have more pavement to work with through that area. So they're the things that I would look at as positives for that, for that project.
So another question about possible future widening efforts. Would the location of the shared use path, would that inhibit, if suddenly the Victory Boulevard scored high enough to be a priority, would the new shared use path inhibit any future widening efforts?
So the, so during the design, the shared use path is not up against the roadway. So there is a space between where the shared use path is, and a ditch for the section that's in yellow. So it's sort of outside of that. So it gives you some right-of-way. And we're lucky that we have a pretty good amount of right-of-way for that yellow portion there coming into Pecosin. Like I said, we didn't have to buy any right-of-way to do it. But we didn't put it right next to the road, just in case there's any future development. Now, I'm not saying that the shared use path may have to be moved or something like that as part of construction when you get into design, especially around any waterways or outfall ditches, those type of things. Sometimes you try to bring them up closer to the road, so you don't have to build a standalone bridge. But if, and something like that may change the design just a little bit. But typically, for this design, they're doing it away from the roadway.
One more. Are there any capacity improvements east of, to extend east of Big Bethel Road in works? Or that have been approved?
So the only projects that I know that are funded, and when I say that's approved, because you have funding in the six-year plan, are is this one here, which is the capacity improvement, and the ones that's currently under construction. I'm not aware of any other application for that corridor from there to, let's say, 17 or 64 for any additional enhancements at this time. But that's not to say that, you know, future applications may come in that request for, you know, additional widening or any mitigation type things.
Yeah.
So you're talking about the score, and like, this application originally came in, six-year plan. What's the timeframe where that score was taken? You know, I'm thinking, you know, things change, and things change on the time this score was originally done. If you were to redo it right now, and maybe there might be an idea to do something different. How, how does that work?
So, you know, the applications are submitted from each locality. So that's sort of the locality's just thought on what they want to do with transportation planning. You know, what they want to look at to increase, those type of things. I'm not saying that some changes may not happen between the time it is approved. Some of these projects are accelerated. So instead of six years, it could be four years. It just depends upon how it falls in the six-year plan. But if things are changing, there are ways that you get no more, no additional smart scale funds. But we've seen scope increases, or, you know, want to add this or something of that nature. And it qualifies where the locality is partnering with us anyway, is because they are a contributor of funding on this too, that they want to add more funding to a project to do this or something of that nature. That, we always have that ability to look at those. We're case-by-case basis.
Score, or when would that have been done for a particular project?
For, for the, for the project in red out there?
Yes.
I think that was, I wish I had my York County update with me. But I think it was either '22 or '24. I'm not sure exactly. But I think it was like '22 or '24. I mean, it would have been, it would have been around about five years ago, four, five years ago. But I will say that they look at projected traffic volumes. You know, it's not, they look at current, but they also look at projected traffic volumes for the time that the project will be going on. There is some foresight with looking at those.
And one, back to the With Creek Road extension. When it gets down to being almost done, and you go to paint lines on the road, is it possible to put no passing lanes? There's three subdivisions down there that I would think should be no passing areas as you approach those three subdivisions, because people are trying to get out of there. is 25, and some people don't agree with that, and they decide that they're going to pass, and you turn out, turn left to come into the city, only to find you're looking headlight to headlight at another car. There's no now passing position on that road. It would be nice when there are completed, that there be no passing areas by those three subdivisions, which are intersections, which I think are going to have the crosswalks, if I would, I.
We'd have to look at the marking plans, I'm not exactly sure.
Understand.
But we'll look at the marking plans, and as it comes up. Do you remember what subdivisions those were, you were specifically?
Hunt Woods, Forest Park, and I can't remember the name of the third one.
What was the first one, I'm sorry?
Hunt Woods.
Hunt Woods.
Second one is Forest Park.
I got it.
Two Rs.
That Wood Haven? Is that Wood Haven?
Believe it is, believe it is.
At least they give me a reference area. But we'll, we'll look at it and send something to Mr. Wheeler.
Any other questions, council members? Mr. Carroll, Mr. Ludwig, thanks so much for coming back tonight.
Thank y'all for having us.
Well, very insightful, and appreciate your patience as well with taking the questions.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. That concludes our presentations tonight, and we'll move into item E, Audience for Visitors. And we will now open the floor for public comment related to the city. And I have one speaker card. This is from Dr. Dawn Id, and I'd like to point out that Dr. Id represents and serves the city on the Colonial Behavioral Health Board. So, Dr. Id, thank you for that, and welcome to the meeting tonight. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to keep this as brief as I possibly can, being cognizant that it is after 8:00 PM already, and I'm sure you've all had a long day, and so have I. I'm just going to give you a rundown of how I'm going to give you this information, and then see if you have any questions. So I'm going to tell you who I am, why I'm here, what I know you can't do, because you're probably wondering what I, what I'm going to need from you, what I'm asking you to do ultimately, okay? So who am I? So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Dr. Dawn Id, a doctor of healthcare administration, teaching professor and researcher for over 15 years now. Lived in Pecosin for about a decade. I teach national and international students, health, anything healthcare administration. I teach at our local VPCC, and their workforce development program. So I go all the way from workforce development to terminal degree programs, and I have even taught in Saudi Arabia. So I have a very large reach of the amount of students to whom I teach. And why am I here? So that's all fine and well. And I should also include, I have a wonderful husband, Brett, who's a military naval veteran, which is what brought us to Virginia originally. We're from another Commonwealth Pennsylvania, born and raised. And I have three rescue dogs, and I had three rescue cats, one died of cancer in July, unfortunately, so now I have two. We were never able to have children, so it's just us and our pets. So why am I here? December 29th, my husband and I got back from a Christmas vacation, and we have a little bit of time off, so on our time off, we do two things. We vacation, or we're home spending time with our animals. We exercise, we do things like that. We went to take our pups for a walk, as we'd have every day for the past decade, and there's three of them, they're little palm cheeks, they range from 17 pounds to eight or nine. Bear has gained some LBs over the holiday season, as we all have, so he got a little bit heavier, but they're very little dogs, two are senior. We took them out, and unfortunately, we had an incident where we had been attacked by a larger dog. Breed doesn't really matter, although it was a pit bull terrier mix, and it left us in a very traumatic situation. So with this traumatic situation, we, of course, tried to rectify it as quickly as possible, and we received very little support and no accountability from the individual who owns the animal. So this, of course, got us a little bit concerned as to what we could do, what we can't do, and what our recourse would be for us as residents, as citizens, as, as people. We have a neighborhood where we have a lot of small children, we have a lot of dogs, we have a lot of elderly folks who walk their small dogs, and they take their grandkids out. So when you're attacked by a 100-pound pit bull, and you're two fairly young, strong people, and were able to fight it off only after three minutes, you can only imagine what would have happened if it was a small child, or one of our elderly members of the community who were walking their animal that day. It would have been a disaster. So with that being said, and with little recourse legally, this is really why I'm here speaking to you today. And for all transparency purposes, I do intend on taking this to, of course, the state for their support. And I've already reached out to the governor-elect, Governor-elect Spanberger and her campaign. I have already gotten a response from her and her campaign, saying that they were sending a good amount of the materials that I had sampled to you to policy review, okay? So that's the background of why I'm here. So keeping this, again, trying to keep this as short as I could possibly keep it. We had a dog attack, and I looked into the law, and the law does not support the recourse that it needs to support in order to protect families, children, and of course, companion animals. There's another side of this whole issue, which I'll briefly mention, because I do usually keep up with not only healthcare, but also mental health, and veteran issues and things of that nature. So companion animals are property, of course, as you all know, and other states are changing that. Pennsylvania has changed it, they're another Commonwealth, and they are under a lot of the same restrictions that Virginia is under, but they found a way to do it. So that's really what I'm going to the state for. But how can you guys help? So what can you do? And I know that we had mentioned, because we are under, you know, the Dillon Rule, it makes it a little bit more difficult, but the, the expressly granted, and the necessarily implied powers that you all have, or that they have given to the local governments, were given by the General Assembly. So you can do more. So your reach does not have to be, well, the state gave us these basic rules, and this is what we have to follow. And other localities in Virginia have moved to strengthen or to make their accountability more strict. And what that does is that helps to divert folks who are going to do things that endanger not only society, but their own animal. That's another part of this that I do want to express, is that first and foremost, we are advocates for the animals, right? So we're advocates for our animals, and we're advocates for every animal. When an animal is taken out and it doesn't have the proper gear, the proper training, the proper socialization, and it goes out into public, and it's allowed to just go out there with not even a proper collar on, and it slips out of the slip rope it was in, which is what happened in our case, it prevents a very preventable issue from being stopped. So we could have prevented it, I grabbed onto the rope myself, the dog slipped out of the rope, and then you have a very slippery pit bull, that there's nothing to grab onto with. So that's, it really added to the stress of the situation, and we could not gain control. That hopelessness and helplessness of watching a family member of yours, whether it be an individual person, a child, God forbid, or an animal, you know, essentially being killed in front of you, is, is very heartbreaking. So what you can do with our legislative actions here in Pecosin is you can add greater detail to what we already have. You can impose stricter standards, you could address local conditions, and you could really make a strategic path forward that includes, includes maximizing enforcement with Title 3.2. Document all of the statutory deficiencies, and I know that I sent you quite a lengthy email, that does note a lot of those. You do have to acknowledge that after that incident, there was a lot of nights of no sleep, for multiple reasons, including, you know, playing it back in your own mind, but then moving forward and saying, like, how do I correct this? What are the steps that I can take to right this wrong? Because our law doesn't actually protect the folks that it's made to protect, right? And I didn't know to care about this. So the complacency that I had, and my husband had, and we had, where we weren't bringing anything with us to protect ourselves, we never had to worry about it, we just figured we'd take the pups for a walk, they'd do their business, we'd pick it up, we'd go home, throw their business out, and we'd go about our day the same way that we always had, and I think most people think that. And it's that complacency and thinking that we were safe, because we live here, and because we trust it, and because we know our neighbors, and because we know every dog on the block, and their names, and the names of the cats that are just indoor cats, et cetera, we didn't think that we had to worry about that. And it turns out that we were wrong, and we did have to worry about that. And we're folks who travel quite a bit. We've been to Mexico, Thrace, I think, in the past year or two, and we never worried about not being safe, but yet in our own town, that is typically very safe. Now we have to worry about it, and I also have to think about making positive social change, because the law doesn't support or really protect its citizens, and it really does need to do that. I know that most of you have children and grandchildren, and you really have to think about them moving forward, not so much maybe you, and definitely not so much me, because I was already the victim of something like this, but for them, even though we don't have our own children, I think it's something that really does need to take place here. So you can advocate for state-level change, you could adopt a more comprehensive ordinance, of course, that's allowed up to the statutory limit, and you are not there yet, you absolutely could do more. And you could explicitly acknowledge the statutory gaps, and you could request more authority from the state. So you don't have to be complacent in what you ask the state to allow you to do. And typically, in these types of situations, and of course, I had sent the council some supporting information, documentation, and of course, references, because I teach and that's what I do, but you are allowed to go with something like this a little bit further without the, the Dillon Rule coming in and tightening the constraints around you, as it would with some other items. So you have a little bit more leeway there, as long as your local ordinances don't conflict with state law. The state law doesn't necessarily need to authorize the subject matter, because it's already on the books, okay? So there's a few things that you guys can do in order to make your own city safer for yourselves, me, your children, your grandchildren. As far as, as me saying, you know, I would like to see companion animals identified as family members instead of the same as, you know, farm animals or cattle, et cetera, that's a fight that I have to take on with the state government, and it's one that I intend on taking on with them, to follow suit with other states that have already, you know, done that, so. But that's what I'm asking for you guys to do, is to really support this, so we don't have other folks go through the same thing that we did, and, and some folks who may not have been as physically strong, or as mentally strong, or as young as we were, and I think it turned out as well as it did, because, again, we had to be on the ground fighting with a 100-pound animal that really just had the advantage over the both of us terribly for three whole minutes. And I don't really think it would have turned out another way if it was a more vulnerable part of our community, and that's who we're here to protect today. So we ask that you, you consider this, and hopefully, you add something to the ordinance that can help protect the citizens of Pecosin a little bit better.
Dr. Id, thank you so much for being here and, and sharing that with us. And I do have some comments that I intended to make later in the meeting, but I think it would be more timely if I make those comments now. And this is with regard to Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, Division 3, Section 14-141, Dangerous and Vicious Dogs. I'd like to remind the public that City Council acted to add the state's provisions on dangerous and vicious dogs during the December 8th council meeting. Our city attorney, Mr. Wayne Moore, is working with Animal Control to determine the best course of action for this particular incident that occurred within our city. And I've asked Mr. Moore and Mr. Wheeler, our city manager, to work with Animal Control to review our city ordinance, to identify any further changes that may need to be made. So just wanted to make that clear, and thank you again for being with us tonight.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I appreciate your time, I appreciate the personal telephone call.
Of course. Yes, ma'am.
I think for leadership in, in the position, it's important to stay in touch with folks like that, and it's a really good example for other, other people and other leaders, so.
Well, thank, thank you so much. We all work together, it takes all of us.
Appreciate that.
Yes, you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Do we have another speaker? Yes, sir. Welcome. Would you mind sharing your name and address, Willis, please?
I'm Randy Neal, I'm on 7 Oakmore, in Pecosin. I'm a physician, veteran of foreign wars, and retired colonel. Reason I'm here is the VFW, the Veterans for Foreign Wars, were taking nominations for the firefighter of the year. And I called Chief Bryant just last week with an impossible task to bring forth two nominees in a very short time span, through no fault of his or my own. It just highlights what an amazing place Pecosin is, because he took my call, within 30 minutes, I was in his office. He knew exactly what we needed, and he gave me two nominees, and they are very strong nominees, and it will work. But if I was in Hampton, or York County, or, you know, Virginia Beach, that would never happen. That's what's special about Pecosin. You guys are always here, you're always attentive, and you're always willing to take a phone call, and I thank you for that.
Mr. Neal, thanks so much for being with us. Appreciate what you do for, what you have done for the nation, and the greater good of all. It is a special place, and as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we're very thankful to be here, and feel very blessed to have what we have, and for that, we are truly thankful.
And please thank Chief Bryant.
Yes, sir, certainly will. Thank you again, Mr. Neal. Do we have any other speakers? Very well, we will close the public hearing, and we will move on to item F, Approval of the Minutes. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the work session on December 8th, 2025?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Kristi, awful vote, please.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Fie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting.
Aye.
Mayor Hux.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular session on December 8th, 2025?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Okay, Kristi?
Councilman Fie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bunting.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Mayor Hux.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Uh, thank you, Kristi. As I said earlier, we have an amended agenda tonight. Since the public hearing originally scheduled as item G has been canceled, and we'll deal with that at, at the next meeting, after it's been advertised. We will move on to item H, Comments of the City Manager. Rand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Two items tonight. One is a public announcement. This week, weather permitting, will be the last day of significant work pertaining to the installation of the new traffic arm there at the main intersection at Victory Boulevard in With Creek. As you may recall, the traffic arm closest to Taylor Dental was hit by a motorist some time ago and needed to be replaced. The remaining significant step is the installation of the actual arm. The base is in place, as is the, the stand-up pole. That will happen sometime this week, not on Friday. It will necessitate a brief five-to-10-minute full closure in that direction, and otherwise we'll be routing folks to With the PD, and that should be the, the last step of that. And also, to stay with the theme of traffic-related issues, Mr. Ruck, he spoke, or, excuse me, Mr. Carroll spoke, about the, the Carrie's Chapel detour there. Chapel detour there. We did work with the gentleman that owns both the Vector Twenty-seven Building and the Surf Sup Restaurant to install a one-lane temporary road from the back of the Vector Twenty-seven parking lot to the Surf Sup Restaurant. So if you would like to continue to patronize that restaurant, I hope you do. I know that you don't have to go all the way around the long way to get there. Just go to the last parking lot on the right, take a turn, and you'll see that cut-through road right in front of you. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Randy. We'll move on now to item I, Council Directives. Keith?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing I'd like to say is I was able to attend the Virginia Dules competition on Saturday. The earlier meet, the third round, Pecosin High School had successfully made it to the third round. Unfortunately, they came up against Conner, I think it's Corner Canyon, Utah High School. And watched that. It was, they fell behind quickly, the team did, caught back up almost, and then it got into a slugfest. The most exciting one for me was the heavyweight class. I apologize for not knowing the student's name who competed for Pecosin, but it was a back and forth. Whereas in the lighter rounds, the students are flying all over the place. In the heavyweight, just like two bears grappling with one another. It went to at least two, I think it was the third overtime, and the Pecosin competitor prevailed. I think I twisted my back out using body English to try and help him turn the opponent over to no, but he did win the match, which was great and a lot of fun. Unfortunately, they lost that round, and then ended up fourth overall in the tournament. As the announcer said, they, they didn't lose, they came in second, because the phraseology he used. It was just an amazing event. There were ten matches going on at the same time, meaning twenty schools were out there competing against one another. It was just noise and mayhem, and I don't know how the students kept their concentration on their opponent with all that noise and whistles and everything. But it was a good time. Later that day, I also had the opportunity to attend the rededication of the Mary T. Christian Auditorium at Virginia Peninsula Community College. When I worked there, I had the opportunity to give tours through that building and that auditorium, which was very nice at the time. It's even nicer now that it's rebuilt. For those who may remember, in April of two thousand and twenty-one, it collapsed. Luckily, no one was in the building at the time. The campus was closed because of COVID, and no one was hurt. It took them four years to get the building back and the auditorium back up, and had great dedication. And I envy the people that had the ability to perform, saying, and everything else that I don't. I just have to rely on my good looks to get by. Yeah, you can laugh. Thanks, bud.
That's good. I was trying to keep it straight.
But thanks you. And again, the Mobile Food Pantry did a great job last Thursday, we can go, at servicing the people in Pecosin. The numbers did drop off after the holidays, but we expected to get back up. And Amos Baptist Church, as was said earlier, is doing an outstanding job at providing food for the people that need it, not only on the second Thursday of the month, which is when we have the Mobile Food Pantry distribution, but all, all the time as well. So, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Keith. Debbie?
I just wanted to thank all those who came out for the special presentations, the Department of Social Services, Trafficking Awareness, for accepting that resolution for Human Trafficking Awareness Month, that recognition, and for the gentlemen coming out from the Virginia Department of Transportation, and their explanation of all the inconveniences that everyone, you know, is having to put up with, hopefully, down the road when everything's complete, back on that. And I know we'll be thankful it's over, and hopefully enjoy some, some relief from the current question that we have. Those speakers that came out tonight, thank you for, for being here and sharing thoughts and your concerns, and us, and for those that are here for other reasons. Have a good crowd out here tonight, so it's good to see everyone coming to participate. Happy New Year to all, and wish everyone health and prosperity ahead of you. And that's it.
Thank you, Debbie. Mr. Freeman?
I'd just like to comment on Randy's and the city putting that road through to our Surf Sup business. That was a great thing to do. Y'all did great. Other than that, I have nothing further that hadn't already been said.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Jeannie?
Well, so many of the thoughts that I wanted to share are already offered. You know, Happy New Year. I hope everyone has very good luck with their New Year's resolutions this time. Have a couple on my own. Remember that even though some of our sports and school system close out in the fall, we have an active spring with so, with so many groups and our arts, and arts programs. So please continue to support schools, keep an eye out for what's going on, and, and show up for our kids. That's it.
Thank you, Jeannie. Angie?
Not much more to add. I'll just say, as a parent of a current middle schooler and a soon-to-be middle schooler, I look forward to the Heron Project Club and seeing how that comes into our school system and evolves. And thank you to everybody who has worked to get, get that off the ground.
Thank you, Angie. Appreciate it. Mr. Southall?
Well, I would first like to welcome everyone here that came out to the city tonight. I thank you very much for paying attention to your city, and as government, I would like to see all those chairs filled. Invite your friends next time. I ask all of you to participate. We have lots of boards and commissions. You can file petitions and join. There's always a hole for someone to fit in somewhere. I'd also like to thank everyone at home who's watching and paying attention, because if you can't be here, that's the best thing. And I wish everybody here and at home a Happy New Year. And my, my second comments to everyone who came here to make presentations tonight, and Keith, my apologies, you hit my funny bone there. And I wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I hope it's better than the previous ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Southall. Appreciate that. This meeting is another example of why I look forward to council meetings every time. So thankful to live in a, a close-knit community to where we can have this sort of, sort of civil discourse, and the positivity that we can share and protect. We all know that negativity ages, but so is positivity. And so thankful to, to be able to work with such a fine group of people and serve such a wonderful community to where we can have this kind of positivity, and thankful for the relationships that we share. I'd like to thank Mr. Jason Ernst and Jonah Easley for their IT support tonight. Could not be able to, would not be able to have the meetings without their efforts. So, thanks to all involved. And with that, can we please have a motion and a second for adjournment?
Move.
Second.
Thank you. Christie?
Vice Mayor Bunting.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett.
Aye.
Mayor Hux.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Christie, and we are adjourned.